Thank you all for being here this evening. We'll go ahead and get started. I want to thank each of you for being here at our Cobb County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting this October 28, 2025. I'm pleased today that we do have Pastor Andy Rutherford of Marietta Nazarene. He will be providing our invocation, and that will be followed by the pledge, which will be brought by Lieutenant Cody Thompson. For those of you who are willing and able, please stand for both our invocation and our pledge.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for this day and the beauty of our community. We're grateful today for the privilege of joining these community leaders as they gather to conduct the business of our community that they've been entrusted with. I ask you now to meet the needs of our community. We pray for those today who are hurting and facing the harsh realities of life's challenges. There's so much to bring to you today, and yet our faith reminds us that you know our needs and care for us even before we ask. We ask that you give your wisdom to these leaders as they carry out their responsibilities. May they seek always to do what is best for others. In a day of division, may we strive to work in unity and believe the best in each other, especially in moments of disagreement. And although each one has their own unique way of looking at life, may their worldview be shaped by your heart and purposes. May politics and personal preferences be set aside for progress and productivity for this place that we call our home. And now we ask you for your blessings on our lives, and may we with sincere hearts seek your face and walk in your ways. May the beauty you have placed inside of us be seen as we walk together in peace and help us to be witnesses of your goodness. Remind us that service and leadership are never as much about us as it is about others. Protect these commissioners in their work and lives and sow the seeds of kindness and blessing through them. And may this city and county be an example of what can happen when we lead, serve, and live because we see life through your eyes and with your heart. Pour your spirit out on this place. We pray this in the name of our Savior and Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lieutenant Thompson and Pastor Rutherford. Pastor, please come back. That was a wonderful invocation. With that, our meeting is now officially called to order. We do have three presentations that will be at the top of our meeting. Our first one is to recognize this week, or excuse me, next week as Green Light for Veterans Week. For those of you who are here as part of that presentation, I ask that you please join our Commissioner up front.
Good evening, everyone. It's an honor always to do this. This program, I think, started with the National Associations of Counties, NACO. And it's a national program from November 4 through the 11th. We ask everyone to put a green light bulb in their front porch light for veterans. So I'm going to read the proclamation. Our senior services and property facility management team are here because you'll see the lights in the breezeway will all be green for the week and maybe the month, because we usually leave them up a little bit longer. And also in our offices and at home. So, "Whereas the residents of Cobb County honor the men and women who have served in the armed forces. We believe their service has been vital in maintaining the freedoms of way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities each year, an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. Transitioned service members often experience high levels of stress and are at risk for suicide. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages everyone to recognize Operation Green Light, an initiative highlighting veterans who have difficulty accessing benefits after serving their country. They appreciate the sacrifices of our U.S. military personnel and believe specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore, we the Cobb County Board of Commissioners do hereby designate Cobb County as a Green Light for Veterans County and declare November 4 through the 11th, 2025, as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Citizens are encouraged to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made the immeasurable sacrifices to preserve our freedoms by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November 4 through the 11th. This is the 28th day of October 2025." Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you to the entire board for this honor. But thank you, Commissioner Burrow. I know you are such a supporter of our veterans, and this means a lot. We want to say thank you to all the veterans you know, in Cobb County for your sacrifices. But also, this is just a small token of our appreciation and to bring awareness to veterans' issues. We want to say thank you to their families as well because they sacrifice a lot. You know, it's the entire family, and we cannot forget that. I would like to say thank you to Facilities Management for helping us you know, with lighting all the county buildings green during this week. And as the Commissioner said, please join us and change your light bulbs on your porches, you know, for that week or for the month in support of our veterans. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrow. For those of you who are here as a part of our recognition of Filipino American History Month, I ask that you please join me up front. All right. It's certainly my pleasure to see all of you here today as we have been having this recognition for several years now. But I think the crew keeps growing and growing. Yes. I want to thank all of you for being here today. And if I do bat an eye of sleepiness, it's because they fed me very well before the beginning of this meeting. I just want to thank you for that delicious food. Well, whereas across the nation, state, and county, Filipino American History Month is being commemorated this October on the anniversary of the first recorded presence of Filipinos in America. And whereas the earliest documented Filipinos arrived in the continental United States on October 18, 1587, when the Spanish brought them from the region of Luzon to California as slave labor to establish the Spanish foothold in North America. And whereas during World War II, more than 260,000 Filipino and Filipino-American soldiers served under the United States flag to make our victory possible and also fought for the promise of a more just and inclusive nation. Today, Georgia is home to more than 51,000 Filipino-Americans, and more than 4 million reside in the United States, making up one of the largest Asian-American ethnic groups in our country. And whereas during Filipino-American History Month, communities recognize the social, intellectual, and economic contributions this group has made to our country. Now therefore, we the Cobb County Board of Commissioners proclaim October 2025 as Filipino-American History Month in Cobb County. And we encourage all to celebrate their stories, their culture, and contributions in our community, our state, and our nation. This is the 28th day of 2025.
Chairwoman Lisa Cupid, Board of Commissioners, other guests. I'd like to thank you all for, we would like to thank you all for this proclamation and recognition of the contributions of the Filipino community to the culture and traditions of Georgia and the United States. If you'll allow me to give a little context on the Philippine immigration to the United States. The first mass immigration to the United States started in 1935 when we became Commonwealth of the United States. And right after the war, we were given independence by the U.S. So that started the second wave of immigration to the States with the wives, the spouses of the military services. And the third wave started in 1970, after the Immigration Act of 1975, whereas the professionals like doctors and nurses and engineers came over to fill in the vacuum in the United States. And the people we see here came from that wave. So prior to about 10, 15 years ago, the Filipino community was practically invisible as an ethnic group. And it was only till recently that we started to be very visible. And now we have a representative in the person of Marvin Lim, in the District of 98, and Filipino judge in Brookhaven in the person of Brian Ramos. Thank you so much for this recognition. And we continue to be productive citizens of the United States and especially of Georgia. Thank you.
Yes, and I just want to thank you for the representation of Josephine Arjo Turner, my office. And I also know we have an employee here of Cobb Extension. And I want to thank you for your contribution to our organization. And also want to thank many of you for your participation year over year at our international festival. Thank you. All right. Okay, we're pretty close. Here we go. Three, two, hang on. One. Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you for doing such a great job.
All right. Last but not least, we're going to recognize one of our own, Mr. Mel Pender. Please join us up front for your recognition.
Good evening. It is with a great honor that I get to give you this Cobb County Board of Commissioners Certificate of Recognition presented to Captain Mel Pender, Jr. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners honors you for your outstanding achievements as a world-class sprinter, decorated combat soldier, and civil rights advocate. Your determination and talent led you to win a gold medal in the four-by-100-meter relay at the 1968 Mexico City Olympic Games, an extraordinary accomplishment achieved while serving as a combat soldier in the Vietnam War. You earned the Bronze Star for your military service and as the co-author of Expression of Hope with your wife Debbie, have inspired many through your leadership and perseverance. Inducted into multiple Hall of Fames, you continue to uplift the Cobb County community and embody the enduring spirit of the American dream. This the 28th day of October, 2025.
I want to thank you, Ms. Kelly. It's always a privilege to receive awards. Thank you, thank you. Wow, wow. Thank you so much. I, you know, I've gotten plenty of awards and inducted to 12 Hall of Fames and I'm getting an award next week from the Veteran Association DC from a movie, a documentary they did on the Vietnam War, how the Vietnam War changed America. That one is, want to be one of the greatest awards instead of, instead of the gold medal, but that award I'm getting in DC is going to be something that I'll be very proud of. I served two tours in Vietnam and, and came out of Vietnam, the jungles of Vietnam and won a gold medal for my country. My wife and I, we work with kids. We have a foundation called The Gather of Eagles. We constantly work it every day to help our children get scholarships to school. I'm turning 88. You look good, don't you? That was my joke for the night. But I, I turned 88 on Halloween and, and my wife and I, we, she wrote my autobiography and about my life and it's amazing. I think about the things that I've accomplished in my life coming, growing up in the 60s and the 70s, 50s to 60s and 70s. I was born in 1937, so I'm old. But it's, it's amazing to be here and live in Cobb County. We love Cobb County. Anything that I can do to help you, Ms. Kelly, you just let me know. And this is my lovely wife, Dr. Debbie. She, she, she's a wonderful, wonderful lady and she also is a counselor. If you need counseling, call Debbie. Thank you very much.
That concludes the presentation portion of this meeting and that now takes us to our first public comment.
Thank you Chairwoman. As the board provides the podium for public comments, appropriate to review some of those related meeting rules. Excuse me. Please state your name and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization when you come forward. All comments should be made to the commission as a body and addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the board. Comments should not be slanderous. The board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to all of the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others both the right to listen and to be heard by treating each other with civility. Statement made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the board or the administration of Cobb County government. There is a timer on the podium to keep track of your three minutes. The first public speaker is Dave McFarland.
Is that up there? Can you see that?
Yes, sir. You got it. You can begin whenever you're ready.
Sorry. My name is Dave McFarland. You know me as the local control guy and also the worst-case scenario guy. Tonight I want to be the Dobbins guy. A couple of months ago, they, there was announcement of a town hall that was at Fair Oaks and it was done by a group, Representative Carnegie Mellon and Brown and also Representative Sanchez, the Democratic Socialist Party. Of course, that raised all sorts of alarms in my head and we went out there and there were four of us that showed up at the town hall.
Mr. McFarland, can you help us just leaning a little bit closer?
Oh, sure.
Yes, thank you.
So they were trying to get impact on Dobbins and what our reaction was. Two of the guys that were there had served in Vietnam and this was a cost of war project from, from Brown and Carnegie Mellon and also the safety and security from Purdue. So you can imagine it was left-leaning and we were concerned and so we showed up. They asked us what our opinion was of the cost of war and our answer was, we don't speak German, we don't speak Chinese, we don't speak Japanese, and our kids aren't dying in some stupid war, so we don't care. And I said, well, what about that money that could go to, to social programs? And our answer was, well, we don't believe that federal social programs are, are legal. They belong to the states and, you know, 10th Amendment. But we did, did say that the function of the government is, is defense. And, and we said, talked about the F-22s that were built there in Dobbins, half a mile away. We pointed to them and we said, well, those saved, took out the nukes that were a threat for World War III. And so we, the girl there, she was from, she had relatives in Israel. We pointed out that, you know, they, and she had relatives there and we said, they're probably alive because of that and because of the F-22s that were done half a mile away here. And not only that, but if you look at the fallout from the F-22s and that there are
I live in East Cobb County and I've been a resident for almost 40 years. I serve on the Neighborhood Safety Commission and I'm a board member of the Cobb County
many and including war, it probably stopped the war in Gaza, not only saved Jews, but
Public Safety Foundation as well as other civic organizations.
also Palestinians and maybe the impetus for more and more peace.
I'm here to state my appreciation for your upcoming vote to confirm our acting chief,
Mr. McFarland, sorry, your three minutes are up. The next public speaker is Susan Hampton.
James Farrell, to chief of Cobb County Police Department. Thank you. His extensive resume and his 29 years with Cobb County Police Department shows that he is a wonderful choice. If that's not enough, the months of on-the-job acting as the chief shows that he is the perfect choice. But with that being said, I must state my concern and disappointment of the delay in postponing the vote for chief two weeks ago. My understanding, when the recommendation for Chief Farrell or Acting Chief Farrell to become chief was sent by the city manager, it carried her support as well as the support of the Public Safety Director. To have a last-minute delay, not to mention another candidate's name outside of Cobb County, show up in the newspaper and continue, and other media outlets gave the appearance of Cobb being unorganized or a lack of leadership or both. You caused confusion and speculation with your citizens here in Cobb County. And I can only imagine the uncomfortable position this caused for our acting chief. I hope in your closing remarks tonight, the reasoning behind your delay, the on-again, off-again press conference, and why someone outside of our county was named continuously in the press. But let me end with thanking you for your upcoming vote and I want to congratulate our soon-to-be Chief Farrell, who is and will continue to be a wonderful leader for our Cobb County Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cameron Hoodless.
Hello, sorry, my, my name's Hood Cree. Okay. Hello, my name is Cameron Hood Cree. I am a KSU student and I have opposition to the recent service cuts to CobbLink. I use CobbLink on a regular basis, sometimes multiple times per week. CobbLink County has more than half a million residents, more people than the city of Atlanta itself. Public transport is essential to any major city, including Atlanta and its suburbs. Cutting routes will just lead to overcrowding on remaining routes and will probably lead to even more cuts as funding goes down more. If there is not enough ridership on the express services, consider moving the funding to areas without service like East Cobb so that people can become more familiar with transit in the area. Since the MSFLOST referendum failed to pass in 2024, we should let, consider repeating the referendum preferably during the 2026 midterms. This time, it will be important that we promote the referendum and raise public awareness on the benefits. Please reconsider cutting service, especially around KSU where many students don't own a car or don't want to drive. Thank you very much.
JT Jackson.
Hi there, JT Jackson, District 2. First, I want to say thank you for allowing me this time to speak today and I wanted to talk about some things I saw in the Cumberland area this past baseball season to begin with. First being the closing of One Direction of Wendy Ridge Parkway after games. That was really helpful for the pedestrian experience, myself and friends coming back from games down on that river side of Acre Mill. It was really nice to have that side of the road be closed off to cars when games ended. I made comment back in February around putting into consideration making the intersection of Interstate North Parkway and Wendy Ridge Parkway a scramble crosswalk which would stop traffic on all sides so that pedestrians can cross the street in whichever direction they need. I hope that's still something that's being considered, but the meat of what I wanted to discuss today revolves around transit. So in 1968, 1968 was the last time that Cobb County had the chance to vote on MARTA membership. I think, I know, my, my understanding is that this board has the power to put MARTA membership up for a referendum in the county. If that's something that isn't being considered, I think we're well overdue for that to be a consideration and actually show up on the ballot in Cobb County. Our importance in metro Atlanta has only grown stronger since 1968. We now play host to the Atlanta Braves. We house Six Flags over Georgia. Cobb County is a destination for people all around the world and we need transit that reflects our position in the wider city. So thank you for that. Please consider putting that up for referendum. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Donald Barth.
Donald Barth, good evening. I want to get in here and the first thing before I piss anybody off, I want to remind us about what we can do for our vets coming forward. On December the 13th, there will be wreaths across America. Again and again, the National Cemetery is a huge part of Cobb County and rather than throw all the money and a piece of granite, several times a year, we can go over there and show our love and respect for our veterans. So again, wreaths across America, it's less than 20,000 wreaths, but if you have 5,000 people show up, that's pretty darn good. If we have 1,000 show up, it's really good. If we don't have that many show up, it's going to get done. So once we get behind that, I also want to talk about this rain tax, as people want to call it. What it is, is a stormwater fee. You're not wrong. That should have come from Jackie McMorris and I believe it did enter staff. You are the policymakers and that's what y'all do. Stormwater is out there. It's not a joke. There's thousands and billions of gallons being produced every time it rains. Where's it going to go? Who cares? That was the attitude before. When y'all come together, work with the citizens and let them know this was originally part of infrastructure, it has outgrown what you would call infrastructure and we can get this on the road. It takes leadership to explain to people it's not a tax. It is a necessary part of Cobb. Now let's get down to some brass tacks. I want to talk to you about whether something is awful or unlawful. There's an election going on in Marietta. You know who's supposed to be in Marietta voting? The people that live in Marietta. For the people that think they have some First Amendment right, I give you that. You have a First Amendment right, but by God, you are not hired to come into Marietta. You are hired to do policy and procedure for the people of Cobb. In other words, stay the hell out of Marietta politics. It's not good. Now anybody that used their title, their public title, has probably done something unethical. And that's when we find out, is this just awful or have you done something unlawful? I'm going to tell you again, the people of Marietta love your support, love that you're here, but when the hell do you think you're supposed to be doing telling us how to vote or who to vote for? up for a referendum in the county. If that's something that isn't being considered, I think we're well overdue for that to be a consideration and actually show up on the ballot in Cobb County. Our importance in metro Atlanta has only grown stronger since nineteen sixty-eight. We now play host to the Atlanta Braves, we house Six Flags over Georgia. Cobb County is a destination for people all around the world, and we need transit that reflects our position in the wider city. So, thank you for that. Please consider putting that up for referendum. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Donald Barth.
I want to get in here and the first thing before I piss anybody off, I want to remind us about what we can do for our vets coming forward. On December the thirteenth, there will be wreaths across America. Again and again, the National Cemetery is a huge part of Cobb County, and rather than throw all the money and a piece of granite, several times a year, we can go over there and show our love and respect for our veterans. So again, wreaths across America, it's less than twenty thousand wreaths, but if you have five thousand people show up, that's pretty darn good. If we have one thousand show up, it's really good. If we don't have that many show up, it's going to get done. So, once we get behind that, I also want to talk about this rain tax, as people want to call it. What it is, is a stormwater fee. You're not wrong. That should have come from Jackie McMorris, and I believe it did, and her staff. You are the policymakers, and that's what y'all do. Stormwater is out there. It's not a joke. There's thousands and billions of gallons being produced every time it rains. Where's it going to go? Who cares? That was the attitude before. When y'all come together, work with the citizens, and let them know this was originally part of infrastructure, it has outgrown what you would call infrastructure, and we can get this on the road. It takes leadership to explain to people it's not a tax, it is a necessary part of Cobb. Now, let's get down to some brass tacks. I want to talk to you about whether something is awful or unlawful. There's an election going on in Marietta. You know who's supposed to be in Marietta voting? The people that live in Marietta. For the people that think they have some First Amendment right, I give you that. You have a First Amendment right, but by God, you are not hired to come into Marietta. You are hired to do policy and procedure for the people of Cobb. In other words, stay the hell out of Marietta politics. It's not good. Now, anybody that used their title, their public title, has probably done something unethical, and that's when we find out. Is this just awful or have you done something unlawful? I'm going to tell you again, the people of Marietta love your support, love that you're here, but when in the hell do you think you're supposed to be doing telling us how to vote or who to vote for?
Mr. Barth, your time's up. The next speaker is Monica Delancey.
Greetings, Monica Delancey, District Four, We Drive and Riverside Renters Association. I'm here to talk about the graduation scores that were recently released. Yes, Cobb County is doing a phenomenal job, but there's still two clusters in the Cobb County area that's below eighty percent, both Osborne High School and Pembroke High School. These two communities have some, share some interesting factors, and one of the most important interesting factor is that they both have a high number of apartment complexes in the area. And after speaking with residents in both over the years, Osborne area and Pembroke area, there are a number of apartment complexes that are deteriorating, okay? So when you base the graduation scores, mostly it's based if a child is in that school from ninth grade, twelfth grade. But families cannot stay in areas where the apartments are falling down in disrepair. And in the Pembroke area, there's one apartment, a couple apartment complexes on Riverside Parkway, when people speak up and say, "When are you going to come repair this? Or are you going to address that pool? Are you going to come clean those raccoons in the buildings?" You're not given a renewal of lease. And so people will have to fight their cases for three years. They'll send a lawyer to the court every time, but then did not do anything to repair the property. Let the grass grow over the windows. There were broken windows. In addition to that, there's people complaining about mold and other issues going on in apartment complexes. So yes, we are grateful that Mapleton, City of Mapleton passed the ordinance, but we know it's just a Band-Aid fit. We still got to hold these corporate landlords accountable. Another thing, last night, we hosted a community listening session about the housing crisis. I want to thank the Center for Family Resources for attending, State Representative Terry Cummings for attending and listening, Mr. Michael McNeely there, but what was discussed mostly was the fact on Fridays at the Cobb County Management Court, eviction court at nine o'clock in the morning, and at one-thirty, majority of the people being evicted are Black families. I'm telling you, people have told me, if I'm not there, they said there were a hundred people on the docket, and it says, well, everybody in the audience on the docket were Black, but then the judges and the lawyers, they're all white. And it's going on over and over again, so we need to find out what is really the issue. It cannot be people don't have the money, because how is it that majority of the people that's shown on eviction court are Black families? So, we need to really put some things in place to really address this issue, not just say we gave out some rental assistance. It's not just that, because we have to find a way for people to stay in Cobb County and not just force them out in eviction court on Fridays. Thank you very much, Monica Delancey.
The next speaker is Susan Clark.
I forgot my Georgia Tech attire today, but you can proceed. Eight and O, but I'm listening.
I'm Susan Clark in Cobb County, and I want to address the board and thank you for the hard work, the care that you actually do give to the citizens of Cobb County. There's a few things that I wanted to address, mainly, well, what has to do with elections. I am a poll worker, election poll worker. Needed to make that clear. My daughter laughs every time I say it, and the hours are brutal, fifteen minutes, fifteen hours, I want to keep my time, fifteen hours day. I think this is going to be my last election. Those fifteen-hour days are just brutal, and I do know there's counties in Georgia that do shifts. I know it's going to be more expensive. I know that's not really your forte on the board, but I'd love for you to push it along if you can do anything. I do know that the elections are very tied down. Nobody needs to worry, we're not doing anything wrong. Nobody talks politics while we're there, very, very safe and secure. It would be nice, as far as somebody said, to have transit more easily available. I went downtown Atlanta not too long ago, and somebody who lived near me, I found out she took transit. Well, it takes two-plus transfers to get downtown, and it would really be nice to be able to have a little bit of transit readily, more readily available. Let's see, the storm waters, due to global warming that we know is a problem, we will have more storm water as things get worse and worse, so yeah, let's, I guess there must be an issue with storm water, so pay attention to that. Anyway, thank you for your time and commitment to the county and that we can come up and talk to you. Unlike the Board of Education, I almost got jumped because I wanted to talk to the superintendent by the police. They're like, "You can't go there." I'm like, "I can't talk to him? Oh, he'll come down." So thank you very much for being available to the public.
The next speaker is Denny Wilson.
You know, it's not even Christmas yet, and you guys are the gift that just keep on giving.
Ms. Wilson, we do need to say your name, we know who you are, but if you will.
They know my name, Denny Wilson. Like I said, it's not even Christmas yet, and you guys are the, you guys are the gift that just keep on giving. I mean, I was just heartbroken when I found out that we in the city of Mableton is paying more for our water bills than any other city in the county, and I guess it's because an agreement that you guys made with the city of Mableton. But I don't know why that would be the case, because we're getting the same water that we got before Mableton became a city. So I'm wondering, is this some water from a golden well or that you guys are charging more than the normal rate and Mableton is paying more? And not even that, we get an increase every January first on water and sewer. So I'm just not understanding, you know, why we are being punished for Mableton becoming a city. I mean, you've already thrown us the double taxation on the public safety and DOT. I mean, we're already paying that in the eight-point-four-six mill that we pay into your general fund. And before Mableton became a city, that eight-point-four-six mill paid for police and it paid for DOT services, and now that we've become a city, you guys want to break it out and charge us additional money. I mean, it's just cruel punishment that every time we turn around, it's almost like you guys are trying to destroy the city of Mableton. And I hope that's not the case, because I don't see the city going anywhere, but if you keep putting these taxes on the city, guess what they're going to do? They're going to pass them on to we, the citizens, and we will be taxed burden, you know? So I'm hoping that you guys come to some type of agreement. I've already done the math, and I can tell you exactly what Mableton should be paying for police services, based on the population, based on what you take into your general fund. I've already done the math. And let me not leave without speaking, I'm going to tell you something that I don't think, but I know Cobb County has the best police service pretty much in the state of Georgia. And I, I accept your choice for police chief. I mean, I really do, and I believe in the police, because it's just like American Express. You don't want to leave home without them, or you don't want to go out somewhere and you need them and they're not there. Thank you.
The next speaker is Craig Harfitt.
My name's Craig Harfitt. I want to first say, congratulations. I watched on video what you did in the liquor hearing last month, or the last meeting, and if I could actually see that kind of deliberation and thought about stormwater or any issue about taxation, I would be so happy, because you, to me, that meeting and that one discussion for that guy, it didn't go like usual. It was, usually it's a, nah, slam dunk, you don't get it. But you know, I was amazed, I was just wondering, who was this kid's son, you know? But anyway, so, the stormwater, why we should not go to impervious surface? It's because it's a result of all bad zoning decisions in Cobb County. And the last one was at Schallaford and Johnson's Ferry, right at the end, there was this lake, it was a pond, and there's three pipes go under Johnson's Ferry, and then it's a stream that wanders through Walmart and all kinds of businesses, then ends up going through subdivisions. So this church, you guys approved this, or Stormwater did, they fill in the lake, and they made it impervious. Well, they're going to build houses on it, they're going to build a church on it, they're going to do all these things that when this, when you do have a rain event, and we do have them, there's hundred-year, four-hundred-year, fifty-year events, and global warming, by the way, is all the sun, and if you're looking at the hurricane in Jamaica, that's the sun, the earthquakes are the sun, you know, it's not the little people walking on this planet. So, when this happens, you've set this up where if it gets screwed up, I mean, you could wash out Johnson's Ferry at that point. I mean, and they didn't change one pipe under that road for that whole project, and it's a high point and it goes to low. So, you know, Mableton, it's on the low end of the county. But anyhow, I don't know, I haven't seen you talk about one thing about this government shutdown. If we don't get together and understand that we're just people living together, forget this party garbage, you know, I can't tell you, there's no people getting food stamps, checks, social security checks, and if this thing goes on, it's bad. And I mean, it's like, why they can't pay rent in Mableton and all that stuff? And I just want to see more meetings like-
Starfitt, your time's up. The next public speaker is Hill Wright.
Hill Wright, in nineteen eighty-five, Cobb County moved stormwater from the general fund and pocketed the budget in the general fund, adding new fees to the water bills, asking taxpayers to pay again. And now, here we are, once again, being asked to pay again for stormwater maintenance that is already the county's responsibility. There's no real plan behind this, only another attempt to stick taxpayers with the bill and shift responsibility from maintenance onto residents. The message was clear before and it's still clear today, we don't want Chair Cupid's rain tax. Now, the next thing you're quietly tinkering with is trash service, this time implementing changes incrementally. Repose code changes infringe on our free market of family-owned haulers, replace choice with mandates that make no business sense. You want the mandate where residents can place their trash cans at the street, mine stays by my back door while I want it. You want the mandate that haulers offer recycling services that cost over eighty dollars a ton, even though only eight percent is actually recycled, while ninety-two percent ends up in the landfill at about forty dollars a ton. We don't need new sustainability department, we need a staff accountability to the taxpayers who fund this county. And now you're asking for a two-hundred-fifty-thousand-dollar blank check after already having a fifty-thousand-dollar blank check. Let's not forget, in 2024, citizens overwhelmingly voted against joining MARTA and expanding transit. The people have spoken loud and clear on that issue, so stop pushing ideals that taxpayers already said hell no to. Thank you.
Chairwoman, this is the last speaker of the first portion of the public comment.
Okay, thank you, Bill. We are now at our consent agenda, and the items on consent are scrolling on the screen prior to the meeting. They will scroll on the screen following this meeting. The matters in consent are voted on in bank, meaning they're voted on all at one time. We do have one matter that was pulled from our consent agenda commissioners, that's Consent Agenda Item Six, and that pertains to the Jifa memorandum of agreement for the Water First Program. We also have a revision to Agenda Item Number Four, that's with respect to Noonday Creek Trail, and I believe there was just a change of some of the numbers. Thank you, Commissioner. That's right, it was a modification of one thousand at the last recommended item. Okay, Commissioners, are there any other matters I need to be mindful of for consent or Pam? With that, I move that we approve the items on our consent agenda as it has been revised and to authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm opposed to Number Eleven, warming shelters.
Yes, okay, is there any other comment? Yes, Commissioner Gamble.
I'd also like to acknowledge my opposition to eleven and twelve.
Okay, so warming shelters, oh, that's the amnesty period for new occupation tax certificate Are there any other comments, Commissioners, or questions regarding our consent agenda? All right, I'll call the question. The motion carries five-zero, again noting Commissioner Burrow and Gamble's opposition to Agenda Item Number Eleven and Commissioner Gamble's opposition to Agenda Item Number That now takes us to an a-long-awaited portion of this meeting, and I would think the reason why most of you are here today, and maybe a couple of you may be a little nervous today, but we'll get through that very quickly. I'm going to turn things over to our county manager, and she will tee up our recommendation for the appointment of our Chief of Police.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners. It is indeed a pleasure for me to present to you a recommendation for Cobb County's Police Chief, none other than Mr. James D. Farrell, to be appointed to the position of Cobb County's Police Chief. Mr. Farrell, his experience, his dedication, around his thirty-two-year career in law enforcement, has prepared him to lead our police department. He has risen through the ranks during his tenure with the Cobb County Police Department, from a patrol officer to sergeant, to lieutenant, to captain, to major. He served in the DC role for many, many years, and he's currently serving as our interim chief. It is an honor for me to- It is an honor for me to call him our chief. He is an honorable man, an honorable colleague, and without further ado, it is my recommendation, Chairwoman Cupid and the Board of Commissioners, if you would please appoint none other than James D. Farrell as Cobb County's Police Chief. You are welcome.
Thank you, Dr. McMorris, and it is my pleasure this evening to move that we make the appointment as has been shared by our county manager.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? All right, we'll call the question. The motion carries five zero. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, at this time, I would like to ask our Public Safety Director, our new chief, and his wife Katie to come down so that we can officially honor him and allow him an opportunity to say a few words.
Chief, we need to pass him the microphone.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, first, first I want to thank everyone for coming. I know that this is a tremendous occasion. I'm so very proud of Chief Farrell now, and congratulations to you, your beautiful wife Katie, your family, all the community members, and especially I want to thank the Commissioners for voting for you to be our next police chief in support of our county manager, Dr. McMorris. And I think we've got a couple of things to do before we turn the mic over to you, all right? First, if you'll notice that Chief Farrell doesn't have his badge on right now, well, we're going to rectify that in just a second. His beautiful wife Katie is going to pin the badge, his chief's badge, onto him for the very first time. Katie? Done like a pro. And Chief, the next order of business is for us to swear you in. And so if I could get you to stand at the position of attention and raise your right hand. Katie, if you want to come right in the middle there, so they can, it'll be a good photo op, right? Chief, when I say aye, you state your full name. I'll read the oath in its entirety. At the end, if you so choose, please say aye do. Aye?
James D. Farrell.
Hereby swear or affirm that I will faithfully, fairly, and without malice or partiality uphold the laws of the state of Georgia as well as any ordinances which I am authorized to enforce to the best of my ability and support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia. I further swear and affirm I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state which I am by the laws of the state of Georgia prohibited from holding. I am otherwise qualified to hold the office of a peace officer according to the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia. I am not the holder of any unaccountable public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. So help me God, do you take this oath?
I do.
Congratulations, Chief.
Ladies and gentlemen, Commissioners, County Manager, I'm going to have your chief, Chief Farrell.
At this time, I would also like to invite his mom and dad up and his brother, who is the Chief of Police at Canton. Would your family please come on up? And you may say a few words, Chief.
Wow. And so this is a big night and probably the biggest night of my professional career. And first, I want to start out by thanking everybody for coming out tonight to support me. All the text messages, the phone calls that I've gotten has been nothing short of phenomenal. And, you know, when I started this department 29 years ago, I never thought that I would be standing here today, but I would like to thank our Board of Commissioners and for taking careful consideration and deliberation. I know it's not an easy choice when you're choosing someone for Chief of Police, and they definitely, they deliberated it, and in the end, I have their support, and I want to thank each and every one of them. I certainly look forward to working with them in the future. And I took this interim chief job May the 1st, and there's two people that I would certainly like to recognize that have been a huge help to me. And that's our county manager, Dr. McMorris. Her leadership has been phenomenal, and our Public Safety Director, Mike Register. They have guided me and led me along the road as the interim chief, and I appreciate every single thing they've done for you. You two are phenomenal leaders, and I couldn't have done it without you. So thank you very much. I will keep this brief. I know we still have a lot of meeting to go, and I could probably talk up here for 45 minutes, and so I will hold that for, for later comments. But thank you all for coming out. I would like to recognize just two other people that are up here, and this is my father and mother. If you've already met my wife Katie. My father is a retired chief of CSX Transportation Police. He actually started here in Cobb County in the early 1970s. He retired from Cobb County in 78 or 79. So the first uniform I ever saw as police officer was my father, dressed in the French blues. And he retired, he left, he went to CSX and became the Chief of Police there. My brother, who is a retired chief of police from City of Marietta, and spent 33 years of his life there, and he is now currently the chief in the city of Canton. And so I guess I've got a great family tree that I've fallen off of. And I had to get promoted in this, it's very important to me so that I could at least hold my own with my brother. And that's very important to me. So, but thank you again for being out here. I really appreciate the support. I look forward to working with each and every one of you, to all my members of the command staff and the police officers that's back there in the back of the room, the other agencies from the Sheriff's Department, Kennesaw PD. I really appreciate you guys being here, and I appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Chief Farrell. As you know, first of all, congratulations, we are so excited to have you at the helm.
Thank you.
Um, as you know, I have an adopted canine that's a police officer named Chief.
I do know this.
And he has his own personal dog, which you're kidding.
All right.
His own calling card, and this is for, for Katie, almost said Penny. So there's another surprise. The real chief is here, and Officer McMillan to congratulate me.
Hey, that's, that's one of your favorite dogs?
Yes, he is my favorite. He's my dog. Come on, Chief, come on, come here. Hey, boy. Oh, gosh.
Chief's alive, or do you want me to say?
Chief, this is Chief. This is Officer McMillan, he's his hand mark, and this is my dog, the dog, but you have a replica of it.
Keep taking care of it.
Say, there are two chiefs here, but one of them is trying to show us who the boss is.
Thank you, ma'am.
For those of you viewing from home, we are going to resume our meeting after the room fills out with many of our guests who were here as a part of that appointment. Excuse me, the interview needs to take place outside. We just ask that we resume our meeting, please? Thank you. Okay, we're going to resume our Board of Commissioners meeting, and we are now at the transportation portion of our agenda.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager Drew Ressler with the Department of Transportation. We have four items for your consideration on the regular tab this evening. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a purchasing instrument with Compu, CompuTis Center, United States Incorporated, in the amount of $717,171.22 for advanced transportation management systems, 2025 Transportation Management Center Infrastructure Technology, project number B2515. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve an intergovernmental agreement for maintenance with the Georgia Department of Transportation for bridge fencing on South Barrett Reliever Phase Three, Cobb County Project Number X2407. Approve Amendment Number One to the Cobb Framework Agreement with the Town Center Community Improvement District for said project, and authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Second.
She didn't call on you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there any-
It's been a long day.
It has been. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $646,477.25 for West Sandtown Road Sidewalk South, project number B2711. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gambrell. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries five zero.
And our final item this evening is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Omship Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $2436,054.25 for Peach Shaw Road Sidewalk, project number B2732. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
That now takes us to our Support Services tab, and we have our first item under Information Technology Services.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Our item this evening is a joint item with the State Court Clerk's Office requesting your approval of a two-year contract with the Xerox Corporation for the digitization of physical court documents, an initiative which will improve accessibility for staff and the public while also reducing the need for physical storage space. This item will be funded by 2022 SLOTH Project B0010. We are requesting your approval of the contract in a total amount not to exceed $876,700 under provisions of the Georgia Technology Authority Master Services Agreement for Georgia Enterprise Technology Services. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize, authorize the Chairwoman and the Procurement Services Director to execute the necessary documents.
So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
We now are at Facilities Management.
Good evening, Man and Chairwoman, Commissioners and County Manager. Facilities Management has two items this evening. Facilities Management would like the Board of Commissioners to approve the purchase agreement with Max Air Mechanical Incorporated for the purchase and installation of the HVAC control system upgrade in the amount not to exceed $771,680 for Cobb County Superior Court Building located at 70 Haynes Street, Marietta. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Procurement Services Director to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Allen.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our second item, Facilities Management would like the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Train Technologies Company LLC to purchase seven HVAC rooftop units and associated materials in an amount not to exceed $535,591 for Potter Springs Station located at 1150 Potter Springs Street, Marietta. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Procurement Services Director to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gambrell. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
I believe that takes us to our second public comment.
And there's no one to sign up for the second portion, Chair.
Okay, and that will take us now to our appointment tab, and we do have one appointment, which I will announce, which is the appointment of Raymond Goslow to the Transit Advisory Board. And following that, we are now at the Commissioners' Public Address, and we will begin as soon as the slides are showing on the screen.
For couples who love Halloween as much as they love each other, you can say, come say until death do us part, death do us part this Halloween, Friday, October 31st, from noon to 6:00 PM at the Cobb Magistrate Court. Costumes are welcome and no appointment is needed. For questions, you can contact the magistrate court at 770-528-8906. There's still time to get your fright and treat on a Cobb's haunted, haunted, haunted house. The jumps and scares continue this week with extended hours on Friday, October 31st, at Jim R. Miller Park Event Center located at 2245 Callaway Road in Marietta. You can come in costume and collect Halloween candy from ghouls, goblins, and things that go thump in the night. Scan the QR code to register. Scan the QR code to register. We're coming up on your last chance to vote for your favorite pumpkin. Voting is open through midnight on Friday, October 31st. Every dollar donated counts as one vote. All proceeds will benefit Safe Path Children's Advocacy, Advocacy Center, supporting a community free of child abuse. You can scan the QR code to donate. Happy Halloween from District One. Whether you're trick-or-treating, attending a community event, or enjoying a scary movie marathon, have a fantastic Halloween. And lastly, congratulations, Chief James Farrell.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Allen.
I don't have any slides, but wanted to say congratulations to Chief Farrell, and also that today is First Responders Day, so thank you to all of our first responders. Also, Kennesaw State has a big football game that just kicked off against UTEP, and tonight, if they win, they will be bowl-eligible. So we talk a lot about college football, but our own local Kennesaw State may be making their first Division One bowl game this year if they win. And also, it is Halloween on Friday, so wish all the trick-or-treaters a very safe and fun Halloween. Make sure that you are vigilant and watching out for our trick-or-treaters in Cobb County, and parents who are going to have our ghouls and goblins walking to knock on doors. Make sure that they are wearing reflective gear or carrying a flashlight so that everyone has a safe and enjoyable holiday.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrow.
Before I start with my slides, I too would like to say congratulations again to Chief Farrell. And also, at Town Center CID Awards this morning, Major Billy Mitchell from Precinct One received a Tony Award. So we're very proud of our police, especially today. So Coffee With Your Cop. The next Coffee With Your Cop in District Three will be on Thursday morning at 10:00 at Legacy Church, 1040 Blackwell Road. This relaxed event gives residents a chance to meet the men and women who serve our community, ask questions, and share your concerns in an informal welcoming set, setting. It will start at 10:00. Thank you to Kimberly White and her staff and the team, KCB team, for a very smoothly-run household hazardous waste event Saturday before last. This past Saturday, the Medication Disposal Day, which is a national program as well. And I worked at the Tim D. Lee Senior Center with Officer Welch, Kimberly, and Dawn from KCB, and it was great. I saw a lot of familiar faces from the district. And the next event that Keep Cobb Beautiful will be sponsoring and hosting is at Jim Miller Park, 2245 Callaway Road, Saturday, November 8th, from 9:00 to 1:00. And that will be electronic recycling, metals, textiles, sneakers, the Hefty Renew Program, and also shredding. So you can go to cobbcounty.gov/keep-cobb-beautiful/events. Veterans Day is coming up on November 11th. County offices will be closed on that Tuesday, so our VOC meeting will be held on Wednesday, November 12th at 9:00 a.m. So be sure and get your green light from the 4th through the 11th and celebrate our veterans. We heard today Code Amendments during our work session, and there will be an opportunity for public hearings at our November 12th and Thursday, November 20th. Note that the night meeting in November has moved up a little while, a little week, a week because of Thanksgiving. But you can go online and download the Code Amendments if you missed it today. Don't forget to turn back your clocks on Sunday, November 2nd. Make sure your clocks that require setting are turned back an hour before you go to bed Saturday night. And last but not least, have a happy and safe Halloween on Friday.
Outstanding job, Commissioner. That was a lot of information, and it was all in three minutes.
I know. I was speeding up.
Practiced. Okay.
Yes, Commissioner.
District Four news and update. Alta Beauty has officially opened its door in District Four. The new retailer located in the Heritage Hill Shopping Plaza Center at 1355 East West Connector in Mableton brings a wide range of high-quality beauty products, skincare, and salon services right to our community. Beyond offering a one-stop destination for beauty and self-care, Alta Beauty's arrival represents another step forward in our vision for smart, sustainable, and community-centered development. The addition to the plaza enhances the shopping experience in South Cobb while boosting our local economy through new jobs and increased visitors. As our community grows, it's vital to attract businesses like Alta Beauty that invest locally and share our commitment to sustainable, long-term success. Get ready for a spectacular fun night at the Word of Faith Family Cathedral at their annual trunk-or-treat event. Join fellow trick-or-treaters on Friday, October 31st, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Riverside Epicenter located at 135 Riverside Parkway in Mableton. Early voting is underway. This is the last week to vote early for the Public Service Commission and the municipal general elections. While the Public Service Commission election is open to all visitors across Cobb County, voters in District Four can also make their voices heard by voting in the municipal elections to shape the future of our communities. Advance voting runs through Friday, October 31st, with no voting from Saturday, November 1st through Monday, November 3rd. Election Day is on Tuesday, November 4th. The special election for State Senate Seat 35 will be on November 18th. And finally, congratulations to Police Chief James Farrell on being appointed as the new Police Chief of Cobb County. With over 32 years of dedicated service to our community, your leadership, experience, and commitment to public safety are truly commendable. I want to personally thank you for your steadfast service and protection of our residents over the span of your career. I look forward to continuing our work together to keep Cobb safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheffield, and I'm grateful that you did remind our citizens that we are in the middle of an election cycle. So just want to encourage you, we did have a very poor turnout for the Public Service Commission in the primary in May. Let's exceed that turnout by coming out to the election again on Tuesday, November 4th. And we are in the middle of early voting, so just encourage voters to get out now if you're unable to confirm that you'll be able to be out there on November 4th. I also want to reiterate that there is uniquely a special election on Tuesday, November 18th for our Senate District 35, and want to encourage voters to be mindful that they need to come out two weeks after the general, which will be on, again, Tuesday, November 4th. Two, join my commissioners in commending Chief Farrell in becoming our new Police Chief. We look forward to working with him, and we look forward to making sure that Cobb County remains a safe place that people want to come home and visit. With that, I hope everyone has a wonderful evening. We look forward to seeing you back on Wednesday, November 13th, as Commissioner Burrow did observe, that we will be observing Veterans Day on that Tuesday, November 12th. So we will not have our regular Board of Commissioners meeting on that date, as is typical. Again, please join us back for our Board of Commissioners meeting on that Wednesday, November 12th, excuse me, November 12th. Thank you so much. Good night.
Thank you.[1536.11]